I call to order the planning commission regular session for April 4th, 2023, 6 o'clock, at the Cape Charles Civic Center, 500 Tassau Avenue. Roll call.
Strode present.
McCoy present.
Smith present.
Grossman present.
Let the record show we have a quorum. Can we all stand and? Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You be seated. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
No changes to the agenda.
Do I have approval on the agenda format?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Do we have any public?
No public comments.
Comments, okay, alright.
Okay.
So we get that, so now it's unfinished business.
We're gonna move on to unfinished business.
Go ahead.
So while yes, we had arranged our consultants to join us again for this call, they have not joined yet, so I'm just gonna keep us moving through the board.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
This is really more about our thoughts and where we, what we want to do with the issues they've identified.
Right.
Okay, so we ended at the last work session with the off-street parking. Part of this is how we streamline these. I didn't get to it, but yes, the parking committee has finished their work. The parking subcommittee has finished their work. We do have a recommendation that we're gonna forward out to you relative to how to incorporate golf cart parking allocations within our parking allowances. That will be at your next meeting. I just ran out of time trying to get all these meetings done. I apologize for that.
So it's just golf carts?
It's, that's all we focused on, because we took the town council memorandum to heart, very narrow, very focused in our conversations. But we found a solution which we think is quite elegant, so.
Good, standing.
You're glad for that, Dan? You came up with it.
Yeah, that's fine. But it was Bing, I found it. What, no, no, it was Google I found it on.
You don't have to tell anybody where you stole it from.
No, 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 that's right. It's all about, you know, exercising what few brain cells I got left to phrase the question properly.
And so beyond that, I know, if I'm correct, these were revised about five years ago?
Yeah, Zach, it was Zach, maybe not even five years ago.
More than five?
No, no, less.
Less than five. So I don't know if you guys want further revisions made to these. I can't say we've had tremendous implementation of them, because we just haven't had tons and tons of new projects or new buildings coming online to trigger the parking requirement consideration when you're doing the site plan or for that level of review. Did we get joined by anybody? I thought I heard a beep.
Yeah, I think it may be worth sweeping through just to see if there's any changes. Like, for instance, we keep talking duplexes, and if we allow, we need to talk, does parking get?
Well, you can go to Cape Charles planning commission for a work session. Which, other content, you'll get there with your address. Hey, Anne, you're live.
Just got back from.
You can mute her if you own a meeting.
Anne?
Yeah, I think.
Anne, are you there?
Hello, I'm sorry.
No, you're good. Can you hear us? Anne, can you hear us?
You're muted.
Yeah, you're muted.
Okay, I'm on mute?
The top, the microphone on the top.
Oh, I see it. I am muted. There we go, is that better?
I feel like I'm on a turntable.
Yes, we do, but that's okay. We've already started our meeting, so are we okay to keep going, or you need a minute?
No.
Okay.
I'm so sorry, please keep going.
Okay. So I don't know if I need the screen up, or can you guys see the PowerPoint?
We can see it.
Okay, perfect, then I'll leave that screen up then. So we started with parking, off-street parking requirements. So where I started, Anne, is our parking subcommittee had been meeting for the last month plus. I think we've got some languages to how to incorporate golf cart parking. So I will get that written up here in the next week or so, and then put that on for our next meeting for everybody to look at that. But we're now to the broader questions. Do we think we need to do further revisions to these requirements as they stand? And Paul is gonna give us a little history, because these were rewritten a few years ago.
Yeah, and I'd say probably four years. And it was one of the last things that we had gotten through when Zach was here. And I'd say it may be just worth going through it just to kind of scrub, to see if there's anything since changed. I know single-family residence in R1 has no requirements. And we may want to come back and look at that, especially if we introduce or reintroduce the ability to build duplexes. So I don't have any suggestions there, other than, you know.
So we need to put that on our list as a group, that we need to really make sure we've each had a chance to walk through them, really digest them, especially in light of some of our potential housing changes that we did through that other process.
Right, right.
I would suggest that we also consider, since it's already written in here, coming up with a straw man for a shared parking agreement.
That's mentioned, I think the next slide, if I'm remembering correctly.
Yes, it is.
That way. There we go.
Yep, yep.
So, and Anne, you guys may have more experience or some ideas on this issue. I can tell you, when I realized you had shared parking as an option within your ordinance, we had an attempt to potentially implement it last year, when we ended up with the Bettis Building as a potential height issue. And that would be an expansion of the hotel located nearby. That would have then eight rooms, eight hotel rooms would have been added to that building. And they needed to deal with parking. And so, yes, we attempted trying to figure out what a shared parking arrangement or lease would look like. Wow, that was challenging, to say the least. Just because there were no parameters in your ordinance relative to how close, how far away could a parking arrangement be? Could it be a mile away? How long do they have to have a signed lease agreement for?
Well, the wording says forever.
For your first comment, one thing to consider, anybody with a handicap sticker is only, the reason they got a handicap sticker is because they can't walk further than 50 feet. So take that in consideration when you come up with the right.
We introduced this during the revision, knowing that we were gonna struggle. And we researched different ordinances and found the language that we cobbled together. So this isn't unfamiliar with other people. Now, there's certain requirements, I'm sure we can make to it. But we threw it out there as, hey, here's another alternative, you know, besides the other one being a study conducted in accordance with, and we put, you know, the particular agency or whatever that they would rely on with information. So again, we put it out there, not at the time having an issue, but expecting in the future to have, to address it in some fashion. And that's what we had found other people doing.
Do you guys have any thoughts on a shared parking agreement?
I think I definitely share parking agreements are really good ideas. What I have found is that the market balance is it. It's one thing that locality creates unintended consequences by requiring too much parking, whereas a landlord or a business owner is going to find that balance in the market of what they think people want. And so, I don't know of any instance in which too much parking is created. The problem really with required parking is that too much parking is created, and then you end up with empty parking blocks. And so, I think that, I think shared parking agreements are generally very helpful. You don't want to require someone to do it.
I can't say, I mean, that's one of the issues we're having is, we know at this point, Anne, we're limited on what could be the expansion of our business district, especially the existing structures. The only way to go for 90% of the problem is up. And that is where some people are starting to look and do, add the additional floors to their building. And so, yes, that still puts us in a parking crunch that we're having within the historic downtown commercial district, is how do we then implement those additional parking needs associated with those business expansions, when we really don't, we're not growing any more land to have the parking? So, yeah, we're, I think having maybe some templates, if you guys have access to any shared parking agreements for our type of community would be great, to at least see and let us.
I've had, found, I've run into problems and tried to implement shared parking agreements. Business owners tend to be scared about the liability. And what, for the locality, I think just not requiring, I don't know if you can, I don't know that you can require a business owner to use a shared parking agreement, but it often helps to just enable it.
Well, I think, yeah, even if we have a template that we can make people aware that this is what we're looking for, and what the elements of that agreement would be, would be useful.
Right.
Yeah.
We're not looking to.
We can find new templates. I'll put that on my list to find templates, because I have to have researched templates and found them. And it ends up, it ends up being that a business owner or an apartment owner is concerned about some liability about what would happen on their space. So the question is about, of like, a limitation of liability so that they can enter into a shared parking agreement and not, and not feel like they're opening themselves up to more liability than they're already over to.
I can tell you, when I attempted to do this a year ago, the big issues that we had was, again, distance away from where the business is gonna be, as to where that lot could be. And to some extent, I said, well, there's valet service all over this world for hotels, where, you know, you drop your car right at the front, you give your keys to somebody, and the car goes magically somewhere. I'm not saying that can't be a concept for this town to consider, you know, as we become more robust. But it's gonna take time to get to that level. But some of the issues that that property, that the business owner identified, he was concerned about the length of the agreement. He did not, he would not do one in perpetuity. He felt there should be a timeframe associated with it. And we also talked about a seasonality to it as well. Meaning, you really don't have to have it all 12 months of the year for here. Maybe it is a five-month or seven-month agreement or something, so.
Right, right. On the extent you're saying the timeframe period is what I was saying, and then in your zoning ordinance, you should enable rather than require a shared parking agreement, and not require that a business owner, apartment would have a certain number of spaces, so that the market can take that out a little bit, and what people, what a business owner, a hotel, for example, if they thought that they could perhaps use their spaces in front of the hotel for, you know, loading 15-minute drop-off, and then, and then not value, or loading 15-minute drop-off if someone walks a couple, a block to a public lot, or to, you know, a lot with a shared parking room, with Ice Cream Shop, for example, where they're using all their spaces in the daytime, and they're not using them in the nighttime. But there's a lot of flexibility, and what you want to do in the zoning ordinance is permit the flexibility. And then, sure, as, to add to that, if the business owner feels comfortable, we can find other, we can find other examples of how what you might do is in terms of, again, the town isn't going to force anybody into a legal shared parking agreement. The town could provide for a zoning ordinance, and then the town could provide an example, a template, to say, if you would like to solve the problem in this way, here is an example. So we're making it easier for you.
Right.
Because then it's like, yeah, I don't know if you said right, because I got you.
Well, yeah, then the second option there was really a study conducted in order to have the applicant submit something to the town for review. So, you know, the one thing is the easement in perpetuity, that's pretty extreme. But the other is given, really the complexity of these, we needed to point to something. And we said the procedures in the Urban Land Institute shared parking report would give that framework. So that would then put the burden, again, back on the applicant to do some studying and figuring out how they're going to accommodate and use shared parking.
Yeah, because this is typically, for us, it's typically in a situation where a business wants to change use of an existing piece of land beyond, you know, the standard, whatever the standard parking requirements are. That's when we get into these situations, where we need to be able to offer the applicant other choices to meet the parking requirements that the ordinances demand for that situation. That's really where we're coming from.
No, and I know, granted, the hardware store property, which is going to, is going to be purchased soon and have a new life. And we're gonna be fortunate, because it's gonna be a one-tenancy situation. So it's not where we've had some of the other downtown buildings come to us, where in order to make it financially work, it was, yes, commercial space, first floor, second and third floor, they're looking for residential units.
Right.
And that required parking requirements.
Right.
And I can tell you, one of the criticisms the town received, that I received on your behalf, I should say, is, well, we, yes, there's immediate parking issues right on Mason, but you guys have a municipal lot that is poorly informed, maintained, everything that isn't being well-used. Why can't that help serve some of the void versus making us try and supply the parking requirements? Especially when you're telling us you encourage residential on the second or third floors in the downtown area, because you want that mixed-use capacity. So I think it's a valid criticism, and one that, yes, there needs to be a little bit of flexibility in our parking regs to reflect what might be other municipal opportunities or filling those voids sometime, to give a waiver potentially. So I just wanted to throw that out, too.
And that's, certainly, that's fair.
Yeah.
But, you know, we also had the problem of the railroad properties, and so, like, the land behind the medical center, we only wanted to use gravel and things, nothing too permanent until that gets resolved. That's been continuing.
And probably, and even as we get to a longer, because we're at a pretty long-term lease for some of that municipal parking lot as it stands today, we still don't want a great deal of hard surface there, just because of, we're so close to the harbor, and the Chesapeake Bay Act, and stormwater runoff. But again, there's been an issue of how we've marketed that signage, making people aware. I think we're starting to make some tweaks on that now, and appropriate lighting. And there's some other things I think can do to make people aware that that's a parking option versus just circling Mason like Jaws. Sorry, looking for the spot to open.
And the welcomes in our restroom.
If you're on the right track, though, in your ordinance, you just want to limit what you require.
Right.
There are other planning processes you need to, do things like increase signage and make sure that they're aware. I just would, I would caution that offering a template is great. You don't want to put the town in an extra position of acting as legal arbiter.
Right, right.
For any parking, for any liability issue.
Sure.
I think, I think your zoning ordinance, you want to say this is possible, you should do it. We encourage it. It's one way of feeling with parking. We're not gonna require that you have that number of spaces.
Yep.
Alright, but we do.
I stopped at that last comment.
You know, you look at the slide, the slide right before, we have a table that deals with all the parking requirements associated with the various districts and what have you. So there, we're very specific.
Yep.
And therefore, somebody comes in and puts a mixed-use in there, and says, I'm gonna put four apartments. Well, the table tells you how many spaces you're going to need for that.
Right.
That's where the problem starts.
I think we're gonna be tested here in this coming year, because there's two vacant lots on Mason. One is just sold. And so, I know we're gonna be coming with a building being proposed on that lot. So we're gonna have a brand-new building coming onto Mason Avenue. And how are we gonna handle the parking component associated with that use request? We'll find out, so.
One thing to consider is, as you get to the point that it is well-understood that the town available parking is, well, is much better understood by the community than it is today, you might want to consider, again with a study, to figure out how much of that is normally used and how much of it is excess. And put that in your toolbox, that excess count, for offering somebody in a hard-case situation to consider.
Right.
Okay?
So, yeah, and I think.
What you study is, like, being general, because I have.
I think we need to be cognizant, as someone who lives in a multi-resident unit, who has the requirements.
Can you get your microphone closer to you, Shannon?
As someone who lives in a multi-resident unit.
Yeah.
That has the requirements, I would say, most of the year, 60%, at least of the spaces are empty. And if it wasn't for people wandering in off of Mason and parking in the parking lot, I think even more would be empty, and that's all year round. We never fill that parking lot up, ever. So I think, just like we added in some flexibility in our elegant solution, I think we ought to add in flexibility everywhere.
Within here, yes. I agree.
Yeah.
I think, and I think to Anne's comments, requiring, if you don't leave any space, we're gonna, we'll nip development and growth in the bud, because people won't be able to.
Well, that's why I want to make this available, so that we don't come to that.
Yeah.
That's, yeah.
So, is everybody on?
To Anne's point, yeah, right.
Do we think we're on the same page at this point as the commission?
Yeah, I am. I'd just like to see the words and how we would approach the flexibility right now.
Yes.
This was a solution, and what we put in, saying that somebody can study, somebody can do a shared whatever. Until somebody brings something different to the table, I'm willing to entertain it.
Yep.
But I'm not just gonna allow free parking anywhere anybody wants to build.
Right, exactly, exactly.
So do you think you're clear, Anne, what we're looking for?
No, no, I've heard, I've heard, I have seen some contradictions in that. I'm just to reiterate my previous point. As the market changes and options change, change, and if, when you're talking, you may have required spaces. And many businesses may decide that they need parking over and above those required spaces. In that case, a shared parking agreement could be helpful. And I think it's always important to remember the math of, you can't actually build physically, you can't build an extra, a parking space for every car, exactly every time, every place they want to go. We'll just pave over everything. And so, to the point about an apartment where the parking lot isn't generally used, that is, that's when a shared parking agreement is very helpful, because for every apartment where the parking lot is used, there's a restaurant whose customers are saying, we don't know where to park. We're not coming in, we don't know where to park.
Yeah, the market reacts to the need, for sure. And you see in towns like, you know, in other small towns, if the parking gets so bad, someone comes in, someone comes in and builds a parking lot with a trolley, or something like that. So the market reacts and enables the parking to respond accordingly. And, yeah, I hear Anne, too, that, you know, that song runs through my head, "They paved paradise and put in a parking lot." And we don't want to force that either. I mean, it really, that's, we need to consider that.
Did you hear all that, Anne?
I did not hear the first part, but I heard the second part. And it seems like your body position didn't move, it seems like the microphone's going.
Yeah, I don't know what.
You gotta get really close to these to hear well. If I, I'll make a stab at this to try and summarize. So I think we're looking for flexibility, an ability to have analysis done as each application comes forward. But we're not quite ready to just wipe away any minimum requirements of a base level of parking consideration depending upon usage.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Does that sum it up?
Yep.
Yeah, we can come up with a draft and push it up.
Okay.
Thank you, Anne.
Moving on to slide four, the off-street parking, next bullet, which was need to discuss the dumpster requirements and practicality. It's really not an off-street parking, it's just within this continuation of regulations here, which are general regulations. Anne, take it away.
Can you, can I use this one? Last time I just finished my research, I started making it. Sorry, I don't know why, I lost it, I have.
I know, I'm just, I'm just not skilled today. I've lost basic information.
I'll do it after you say that, because you have to do it, I don't feel that better.
You're too kind, Noah. There we go. Can you see it now?
I can see it now.
So, and I totally agree with this. Our dumpster language is really challenging to try and comply with. Again, in looking primarily in your commercial district, which is where you need the dumpsters. This is different than the trash receptacles that the town issues, you know, your trash canisters. So you're given, I think it's two per account that you're charged, whether it's residential, commercial. If you need more than that, then you can ask, and you pay more on a monthly basis for that. So some of our businesses do end up with 12 or 14 of the trash canisters supplied by the town. Those are really, I'm not saying they're terrible, but they're unsightly when you have that many of them lined up on a Tuesday in July, out, say, on Strawberry Street or something. But not, those properties have no other choice if that's their trash needs. Dumpsters aren't always an option for them, that's the first thing. But where, they're, we have the ability to try and convert people to a dumpster, which means a private contract that they're entering into with the municipal waste vendor. We struggle with trying to comply with these requirements here, just because it's hard enough to get the dumpster in, let alone a fence around it, or screening or security around it, plus still allowing that trash truck to just be able to come in on the day of pickup, and just slide in, lift it, empty it, and then put it back and keep on moving quickly, timely. So I can tell you, this requirement has been a real challenge for us to administer.
Yeah, in my mind, it's overly restrictive. We need to come back and look, because it talks about fences made of brick, stucco, or stone. You know, that's maybe at one time fine, but not today. You know, the fact that it has to be provided by, access provided by a paved, dust-free surface, you know, that's not always appropriate. So I think there's a bunch of things in here that can be removed, modified, or whatever, to make it a little bit less stringent.
So you want it simpleized, can we make it more realistic?
Yes.
There you go.
Okay. And, um, have you been talking to the planners about specific changes or anything specific that is? Or do you want us to just review and?
I have. I have some thoughts on this, and I'm happy to share those with you guys and kick out, kick out what I would look for here. Or, more than anything, I think there's just a, you know, an acknowledgement that, yes, it has to be considered as part of a site plan development. But everything else here is relative to how we do trash collection, which is governed under the town code. So there are ways that we can write this in a different fashion, I think, to at least convey what our intent is, that's all.
How about the timing here? It's one thing for the town, you know, for our normal trash pickup. But when we talk dumpsters, that's usually contracted with the businesses.
Right, that's my point.
Do we really, you know, it would be nice to have this in play, the hours, but we don't monitor it. Unless somebody complains about it, no one would even know the timing is buried in this.
That's correct.
Disordance.
And candidly, if I can move a commercial operation to having dumpsters, so they go down to just one or two dumpsters instead of fifteen trash receptacles, they're not putting them out on the street, it's getting picked up on their property. I'll be honest, I don't care what hour Waste Management or Davis Disposal can agree to get down here, thank God they're coming. That's all I care about.
Yes, 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 yes. I agree, yeah.
So will we have space about some detail changes?
Okay.
Like getting in touch?
Yeah, okay.
Okay, where am I again?
Swim, swimming pool.
Does that change it?
Four seven, right?
Yeah, there we go. Yeah, keep switching between, okay. Go ahead, keep going. Somebody talk.
Have any requests for you, straightforward?
Yeah, I highlighted this one just because I know some changes happen in the building code. And we got caught a little flat-footed this year with this one. And we think there should be something in our ordinance relative to swimming pools and security and safety, so.
You don't want a kid turning in a swimming pool.
Right, exactly.
They don't require, well, they now allow what's called electronic pool covers.
Okay.
And you don't have to have a fence any longer. And we raised, I asked a couple of questions to the building official, things like, well, what if power goes out? Does that pool cover still work? Does it have to be on a generator?
No.
And we didn't really have good answers to those questions.
Oh.
So.
So let me ask you, is the requirement for the fence, was that a safety requirement, or aesthetic requirement, or privacy requirement?
It's a safety requirement under the building code. But of late, as I said, the building code got upgraded, and they allowed a substitution of electric pool covers. And that just raised some concerns for me, and actually, we've, I think, now signed off on two of those in this community.
With no fences?
No fences, you don't have to have a fence if you can do an electric pool cover. But there's no requirement for a generator associated with that pool cover.
That's a bet on our side.
My question to you is, did any of the properties that have electric pool covers also not have this, just because they wanted them for privacy?
Well, the two who came forward and chose the electric pool cover did it because they didn't want to pay for a fence.
Yeah, that's.
So if you're walking around the street and you can just go into someone's yard with a pool?
Yeah, but granted, it may be a little set off the road, it may be in one of the subdivisions, but it's still a pool sitting out there that, and I worry more about maybe not a stranger walking by and going into it. I worry about family members or.
Or pets.
Unattended children, or pets, or something of that nature.
Yeah, right.
Right, but that's why I'm asking you these questions, because in that case, it's like, for safety, if you have that, if you're zoning or if you're providing a fence around a pool, it's not directly on the pool, it's around, which doesn't seem any, small child coming out of a house, or someone tripping and falling.
So in.
So I was questioning that a little bit, in terms of what is the notification?
Yeah.
Because I think the building code got it wrong.
All right, but we can, we can, we can adopt the building code and then add additional requirements over and above it, right?
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, and so that's why I've raised it, is I think in this case, the building code got this change wrong. And I think this community should at least be aware of it and make a conscious choice with what you want to do.
And offer up, then let's make a requirement for fences.
Yeah, and in Phoenix, where there's a.
Back to my initial, I think that it's more straightforward, just if someone has a pool, but there are other features, other safety requirements, require a fence around a pool. And I would think most people would want to do that, because you have your family members in there, they can do it. And you want to protect that from the street, literally. So I think if you added that, it works pretty well.
Yeah, okay, so I just want to make sure you guys are good if we do something like that.
Yes, yes, yes.
And so I would ask to consider that in Phoenix, where there are a ton of pools.
Yeah.
The requirement is that every pool must have a fence around it with a locking gate.
Yes.
And if the house has a child below the age of, I think, ten, I'd have to check that, the fence has to be around the pool itself, not the yard.
Right.
So it has to be separate from the back door, so that a kid can't walk out the back door into the pool and drown.
Right, and the way it was currently implemented for us until this building code change happened is, yes, we talked about if you have access to the house entryway, or doorway, or whatever, then yes, the fence has to be between that point and the pool.
And there are plenty of fence, pool fences that just go right around the pool with a gate, and they're, they're not that expensive.
And we understand that this is just, as I said, this just happened here in the last, not even eight months, nine months, that came in with the new building code came into being for us.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
And the historic guidelines don't have to address. Your last, your last comment?
Say that again, Noah, we missed that.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was just saying, because I remembered seeing something about this in State Bureau, and explicitly, localities can, are enabled to adopt ordinances. And this could be separate from the authority, but adopt ordinances or expenses completely surrounding a swimming pool. And such ordinance may also provide us against being capable of being securely passed on.
Right, and so, yeah, I had told the building official I'd be raising this as part of our zoning discussions, just because I knew this was coming forward. So I don't care if it comes through the zoning ordinance, or it ends up going through the town code as a supplemental building regulation. I just wanted to make sure he, we weighed in on this issue and took the position.
Yeah.
Yep.
And I think, yeah, just from a safety perspective, that's really what we're most concerned about, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Katie, go to scratch.
Yep. Okay, next is floodplain?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, definitely, we just need to add the floodplain district, we're doing the official zoning map. I know we created the official zoning map during the complian process. Katie and I, we talked about, we can, and we updated the zoning map, it did have the, what, like the search.
Right.
We can, we can try to create one map for you that has all of it on it. We had talked about doing an online map that thinks that you're to read.
Right, just doing it as a layer, yeah.
Doing it as a layer, because of course, you can add it freely, or if you want to, as a G I S map. But I think that that is a discussion, how the community would like to, to address that.
And, Anne, what I've shared with you, and just so this whole commission knows as well, when the FEMA maps were updated, somewhere in the last three years?
Twenty fifteen.
Is that long ago? Most of Cape Charles came out from being in a floodplain. So a lot of people aren't aware of that, that is the case. They are, those maps, that link is posted on the town website under the building code, under the building officials' pages. So I don't want you to think that we don't have it out there, or we've missed it somehow. No, we have it, it's an ordinance we have, we have it mapped, and we follow the FEMA maps for the town.
But you would have to go to the FEMA website in order to determine whether or not your property itself is in a particular zone.
We actually have a link to it on our website. So you can, you can get to that map through our website, that's all I'm telling you. So yes, you can see an overall geographic map.
All I'm saying, I was playing with it this afternoon, is, you know, right now, it's at a certain level, and a squiggly line goes around. You couldn't tell whether a particular parcel on its border was in or out. Is it that detail that you can find?
We would, what we would like to do, when we eventually, fingers crossed, through this budget process, that I'm going to get the money to make sure we can have G I S for the town of Cape Charles. So if that happens, and I think it will, confident, we will be able to host G I S and host the county website and make it particular to Cape Charles for itself, and add a layer that would allow you to look at this parcel by parcel, yes.
Okay.
I don't think I'm speaking wrong on that, Anne.
Yeah, no, and I think that may have just come from a note of mine, so I was aware of all of it, and I'm aware of the new map. So, is there a number of ways to fix that?
Okay.
One thing you need to sweep through this whole article with regards to dates. We have some dates in there, I saw, you know, new construction after, you know, nineteen seventy-nine, or blah blah. It just, yeah, there's got to be a clean sweep.
Yes, yeah. None of it has been updated to even reflect that the new maps came out, what those dates of those were. So we need to update the floodplain ordinance to reflect where we are today, yes.
The other question I was, I was going to ask was, in section six, five, six, we deal with the one foot above baseline flood elevation is what you're, talking in the past, whether or not we should consider making that greater than one foot.
You're talking about the hundred-year mark?
Yeah, right now, we, our ordinance talks about you have to build above by one foot.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, what's called base flood elevation, B P.
So all I'm asking is now a time to look at that and say, hey, for new construction, you may want to consider a foot and a half, or what have you.
And I think it'd be useful to involve our building official in that discussion as well, to get his input on that. Because we have those issues, I'm not saying elsewhere, but one of the things that we see people try to do is build up their lots. So sometimes they're doing it through building up the dirt mound, I should say, before, not just on a concrete block issue. And sometimes that's creating some flooding on adjacent properties, where not everybody built up their base dirt level, I should say. So I talk, I would pull in, pull in our building official to have a part of that conversation.
All right, because if we're sweeping through, now's the time to kind of ask ourselves that question.
Yeah.
What was the section reference again?
That was six, five, six.
Six, five, six, thank you.
It's a statistical construct.
Go ahead, Anne.
In that new conversation with the building inspector, we should bring in the concept we're going to ensure about the doing of the fore and after elevation drawing to ensure that the inspection, seeing as the preliminary elevation drawing.
Yes, yeah, we talked.
Image here?
Yes. Michael, you had an issue?
I was just going to say, that's a statistical construct anyway, and you, to try to specify like one foot above that, I don't know it's going to capture very much, because I don't know what standard deviation is, but, you know, it could be well above, it could be two or three feet above it, or below. I mean, it, I think that's a little bit too precise to try to capture something, it's kind of a statistic to begin with. I mean, it just, the fact that that exists doesn't mean it's going to happen.
Right, and I think definitely getting our building official as part of this conversation, because he is extremely knowledgeable in this particular issue where it relates to what, where we're advising people to build. So, for example, we know the north part of the town where the old, can I call it that, a dump?
Yeah.
Was, it's a little softer ground, and so, yes, he does give that counsel to some of the builders and contractors who know you want to put this course of brick here, you want to put this level of foundation, instead of the three, the three-story, or the three-level bricks. You want to do four, you want to do five over here. So having that, that level of knowledge come forward for this conversation is really vital for us. So I think getting Jeb's input on this is essential for us moving forward. Especially since FEMA doesn't think we flood that much.
Yeah, and that's, yeah, and I just look at the railroad property, it'd be nice to get ahead of that. Now, a lot of that stuff is not in our floodplains, but that doesn't mean that we don't try to address it, so that in the future, it never does.
Right. Okay, I've got it marked.
All right.
Variances in the floodplain district. I throw this to you, Anne.
Yeah, I would actually like to compare that with the knowledge that we are gaining when we're updating the recommended language. When we talk about this, we've reached out to D C R. We haven't forgotten that yet, but we will keep going. As long as you're updating your floodplain district, you may as well be in touch with them, because they're eventually going to ask you to update it anyway. And so I would like to put this in the category of discussing with D C R.
Okay.
Because we could, we could talk at length, if we could come up with what we think is the right answer, it doesn't matter, they're going to tell us what the answer is.
Right.
That's for variances, you're saying?
For anything in the floodplain district, they will give you language, and if you, they will be sample language if you don't want to use it, they will still have to review and correct the language.
Yeah, all I'm saying is, we're talking on the slide with variances, and whether or not the B Z A in Cape Charles should be reviewing the variances.
Right, and to my point, if D C R is reviewing it, if they would override what B Z A says in any case?
Yes, I think that's the issue, is will D C R actually be taking on that responsibility or obligation for the localities?
Okay.
Yeah, because I've gone to a FEMA document, and they talk variances, but then they kind of refer to it as, it could be dealt with by Planning Commission, separate appeals board, in some cases, city council. So this is from FEMA. Now, that doesn't mean that D C R, I'd be hard-pressed for them to step in and kind of settle that issue. If they did, that's great.
Let me reach out to them, because I can't, I can't make up an answer, I'm going to have to talk to them and ask them for a message, and we will let you know what to think.
Okay.
That's fair.
Now, I can tell you, my experience in other localities, Paul, is, yes, it's typically gone to the Board of Zoning Appeals to consider the issue. Typically, the staff who brings that forward and helps educate that board is coming out of your environmental divisions. We don't have an environmental division here.
Right, right, right.
So, that I understand what he is talking about, D C R is more skilled in this, I just don't know if they would take on that responsibility for us, or how that would get handled. But I can tell you right now, if I had to bring a variance to the floodplain district to the B Z A, just like we had to do with the Chesapeake Bay Act, it was probably an hour and a half of education before we got to the issue.
Yeah. Well, my bottom line is, it doesn't go to town council. Big surprise.
Okay, next one is Chesapeake Bay map.
A succinct, we can add it to the map, we can add another map, but would you represent it to any ordinance that's not in your zoning map? So the first question is how do you want to actually represent that?
Sure, and.
Take care of it later in the online map, do we need to create another? Again, so to put the floodplain district, the Chesapeake Bay areas, and then all the zoning districts, for one stat map in the lot, so.
It's got to be layered in, yeah.
It's got to be layered in, and again, just so everybody knows, we do have, I finally found through the state, that this town had adopted a Chesapeake Bay overlay map. The town provided it back to me. It is posted on our website, under the Chesapeake Bay, there's a separate menu on our Planning Commission page. So if anybody's looking for it, it's there.
Okay.
There is confusion, I won't say terrible confusion, the state provided me three maps that we gave them. So one is hand-drawn, I think it's the most accurate. So, one is hand-drawn, I think it's the most accurate, believe it or not, uh, but it's not the most professional-looking, but I'm, I'm with Anne, I wanna get to the point that these become layers within, if we're hosting GIS, and then also become standalone, you know, maps that we can print out if need be, as to what the Chesapeake Bay Act is, et cetera, so. I concur with her.
The, the other thing, too, is, um, as we start drilling down and looking at where this particular content belongs in the archive of, of the ordinances, comp plan, or wherever else, these are gonna be rich resources for educating the public, and we need to make sure that whatever we do is readily understandable by the average Joe, where possible.
Oh, that's next to impossible for some of these issues.
Well, go ahead, Anne.
I guess that, but I also think that when we're talking about being readily understandable, that's something we, we talk about a lot, and, and that's why I actually ask those questions about how will we actually represent it. It's one thing to say these are our zoning districts, this is our floodplain, this is our Chesapeake Bay district, and then just smack them all on the map. If your goal is for the regular Joe to understand and use that, that's where I'm giving them a good prize, because it's just so like a bunch of lines off-
Yeah, and, and blocks, blocks to progress, too, for sure, yes, yes, yes. But that's, that's, that's why I'm talking about these being rich resources for education, and putting something in, in, in the minds of folks, at least at this point, 'cause I, we can't make commitments on your behalf, but some of this stuff is pretty, pretty, uh, can become a little more challenging than people have been used to dealing with. But it, it is important for them to understand as they go through the process and work the process to get their approvals to move forward with their business plans, so, yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're at the same page.
Okay.
We're trying to reach into the landscape in a way that, that is acceptable, because you wanna give everybody the tool, but you're-
Absolutely, yes, yes, yes. Thank you.
Okay, next up, uh, same thing, the slide nine is also dealing with the Chesapeake Bay Act. I'm getting there, hang on. Same thing, then I'm gonna move over to the next slide you asked us, which is a, a waiver requirement. Um, so I wanna talk about this just a bit. The position I've taken, while this is language in our ordinance today, which says, "The zoning administrator, when requested by an applicant wishing to construct a single-family residence, may waive the requirement for environmental site assessment and perform the delineation." My, my answer is no.
Exactly, yes.
In big letters, in words.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
No.
Yes, yes.
Um, I'm not skilled in this, I haven't gotten any education in this, and I've made it really clear to every contractor, every homeowner, when this question gets posed to me, I decline.
Yes.
You will need to obtain the services of a professional surveyor, engineer, who can do the delineation. I will go out to site, I will walk it with you, I will review it, I will confirm if I concur with, with the analysis you're coming back with, um, if it's in the RPA, the Resource Protection Area, the, our Resource Management Area, et cetera, uh, but I will not do the assessment myself.
So paragraph B is deleted.
Um, I'm not saying you may not get somebody who's more skilled than me-
No, I'm saying, we should delete it.
I think so, too, because it gives a false impression that staff can, it's just the resources at the staff level to do this stuff. You don't.
Right.
You just don't.
Yeah.
I, I will hold on to that, I agree.
Okay.
Take it out. Yay, okay.
Okay.
Then we're on to performance standards.
Oh, and this, this is actually just about, um, some clarity in terms of the way that the ordinance is laid out, in terms of hierarchy. I, I think that this is simple, 'cause I, I think what I understand is, is just that the way it's written, it seems that this was under, um, under just the Chesapeake Bay plan overlay, and that there are no performance standards for the rest of the town? And, and that, that should be really easy, I just wanted to clarify.
Except the whole town is in the overlay. Including, um-
Okay.
Um, Bay Creek.
Okay, this needs to be clarified, that, that's not simple.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Clarify that the whole town is in the overlay.
And then, I love our last slide.
Oh, God.
We had no words to put here, we were, we were too buzzed. No, I'm kidding.
Is this supposed to mean we need one?
So, say that again?
Is this supposed to mean we need an ordinance?
I, I wanted, I kinda put the, the thing in there, just because there's been so much legislation going through the General Assembly over the last few years on marijuana, um, whether you can grow it, whether it can be sold, whether, any number of things, and, and how that might impact zoning at some point. I don't believe, and Anne, please correct me if I've got this wrong, I don't think they've given authority yet that it can be in a, in a true retail market, um, in any locality. I don't think that happened this year in the General Assembly.
You're correct, and in fact, I think it got further away from becoming reality in the General Assembly this year, um, and, and I do think at some point you need to address it. What I've learned, and I, anyone we talked on the phone, I compared it to the main stores, um, and what I found in other localities is that it's not that anybody actually cares if anyone is vaping, or, or taking any substance, it's what the store is supposed to be like, and to be a best that has its own. Um, such as in my experience, you often choose how to react to it, however you like. Uh, and again, it's preemptive, so if you don't wanna go down the road, you don't have to, you can amend the zoning ordinance when the General Assembly makes a decision. I, I think at this point, we're probably several years away from that.
Yeah.
Uh, but again, I just want, I wanna really keep in mind that, it's okay to separate the issues of how you might feel about that substance with the traffic, and the signage, and the, um, traffic congestion, probably the, the stupid, if, if they're not agreed formally, if they're pretty low, just in great, you'll know how to implement or, or, yeah. But, that said, if you allow retail, and if it allows for the General Assembly, you may wanna consider a way to, um, limit if, 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 like, but it's kind of a different point.
So, that's why I just put it out there, just so, it's coming, but it's not here yet.
That's right.
And we weren't certain we were gonna shake out the General Assembly, I just wanted to put a place marker, and it can be dropped right now.
Right.
So, the-
But, but luckily, we have other pages to learn from.
That's right, you're doing-
And we have other localities to learn from, and, um, and we, we can look to, you know, signage ordinance, it's in Sonoma, California, for example, um, we have presence.
Okay.
Uh, that way.
Okay, so the last two word slides, they were, um, stuff I sent ya. Um, so, at the last meeting, we indicated that, um, there was some recollection that we had done some previous work on a, to, at least the sign regulation ordinance, and Paul did dig that up from Zach-
The Planning Commission only received a copy, we did not get into this at all.
Okay. Um, I can't say I read through every line of it, it actually seemed longer than our ordinance.
Yeah, it, it, in the end, yes, if it can be condensed.
So, I'm, I'm still of, of the mindset of trying to, and maybe this needs to just be a focused conversation I'm willing to have with the Planning Commission to help us figure out where we all stand on a couple of issues, uh, relative to size of signs, location of signs, um, like away from your business versus being around the premises, where you feel about lighting or flashing lights of signs, you know, a couple of things, but I'm not sure that, and I appreciate Zach's work, I didn't wanna just ignore it, but I still think we could get to a smaller page number of sign regulations.
We, we labored over about a year and a half, but subsequent to that, there, there was a statewide decision that made most of that null and void. It said, "Keep it simple," and, you know, so basically, we, you know, we, we did a lot of work, but we had to consider it of minimum value, so don't, I would say, don't worry too much about that, because the state has already made a lot of it.
There, there is a model ordinance that's been drafted by the, um, the, the Virginia Local Attorneys Association that represents towns and cities and coun, counties. Um, I can see if we can get our hands on that, I think Northampton used it as a basis for when they first did their revision to the sign ordinance. Um, the Supreme Court really focused on, you can't regulate content at all, and it's a language issue. We don't do that in our ordinance, but really, this all comes about, we have too many types of signs, and I do mean like, whether it hangs on the wall, is it mounted on top of the roof, is it on two poles, or is it on a mo, a stone monument down on the ground that's lit up? And then we have all those rules about how large each sign can be based upon your, your, your frontage of your building, or the frontage of your road presence of the building, and how many tenants you might have in your building. It's hard to try and easily figure out, one, how many signs can I have for my business or my, my property, how large can they be, where can they be placed on the building, and can they be illuminated, the, it's, it's just, it is a difficult ordinance to even understand as a business owner, let alone as, as the people in the office to have to administer this. You can't answer those questions quickly nor easily, you have to do a lot of reading each and every time I get asked this question, so. I'm, I'm still looking for hopefully a, a, a more simplified document on sign regulations. So, Anne?
Yes, not that one.
So, are you interested in looking at Bay Creek's water?
Yeah, I think it's worth it.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, great, I, you know me, I will, I will say always, something's gonna be about our two days of zoning.
Yes. So, in, in where Paul found this, um, I noticed that they, that he had also done a revision to the home occupation ordinance, so I pulled that out and sent it to you as well, Anne. Um, 'cause that's another one that we wanted to revise, and so, he did a lot of what we found as a problem, he says, "There's lots of questions here, so let's move these to answer statements." So, uh, he gave a shot at that, I don't know if you guys all read that, or had a feeling on it or not.
Uh, no, we're gonna, we're gonna go with what you say you want, and we already have that for being questions to statements.
Okay, and, and so what Zach Pons had, had proposed, I think, is pretty good. Um, there may be a couple of tweaks, so if you, if you guys are okay, I may put those in writing to Anne and, and ship them on to her.
Yeah.
Uh, but, but I think he, he got us going in the direction we wanted it to go in.
Yeah, I, I read, I read almost every, every part of that, and I marked something, and then I realized, no, what they said, I misread what was said, and there, it's on the money, from what I can tell.
Right, and, and again, I know this is Bill Ashworth's concern, I'm not trying to get rid of home occupations, I'm just trying to get to a better written ordinance.
Yes, right, 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 right.
Okay.
Yeah, 'cause we, we, we're never in a, in a position where we wanted to outright ban home occupations, it was just a matter of putting some boundaries around it.
Right, so, and I didn't have this as a slide, but I'm just putting you as a whole unnoticed. Um, I put it, I've informed the town manager of this, it's in the budget submission for the Planning Department this year. Stormwater and erosion and sediment control regulations are being rewritten right now by the state. They have issued draft regs out to, for public review at the moment, um, so they should be hopefully closing here maybe in the next two months. Um, so there's a chance that the state will be having new regulations coming out on those two issues sometime late summer or early fall, which means in turn, once they issue new regulations, we're gonna have to make some changes in our zoning ordinance relative to those two chapters.
Right.
Until then, I have to wait.
Until then, we're gonna wait until that happens, and so I just wanted to make you aware, as much as I'm trying to finish all these zoning amendments in one fell swoop, I, I just know we're gonna have a couple lingerers sitting out there until the state regs catch up.
Yeah, understood.
Do you have any others, Anne, or is this our, we think the, it?
I, I had one, one comment.
The California list is reflective of my going through the whole ordinance and making comments and asking questions.
Okay.
So, do you know, I understand, we've come a full-time question.
Okay, Paul, you said you had something?
Yeah, I had just one, and my theme here with duplexes, you know, if, if we introduce duplexes and they had no short-term rentals or parking requirements, I was just thinking about this the other day. We typically have said, if a duplex was converted into a single-family residence, it can't be used as a duplex again. And, and I'm just asking that question, you know, if we introduced the ability to have new duplexes, can a, a structure that has the ability to become a duplex actually convert back to a duplex with whatever stipulations we have?
You mean, it had been one in the past, right?
But it, it was converted into a single-family.
Yeah, but, okay.
But it's still structurally sitting there, able to become a duplex.
Why not?
Okay, that, that's what I'm just throwing out there, is, is, would have to put that, but any, any, it, it, to revert back, would have to adopt any new requirements?
It would be treated as a brand-new-
Right.
-entry in, in, in the, in the mix of uses.
Okay, that's what I just wanted to, to clarify, right, would have to make that statement.
They wouldn't, they wouldn't be grandfathered in any way, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, lots of critical stuff's happening in Arlington, Virginia, right now, the outcome of which can, could really severely affect us, I mean, the duplexes I grew up in, in Arlington are, you know, a threat, and they wanna, they wanna go this way, 'cause they don't have any more room, and you can understand that. And so, keep an eye out on what happens there, that's all, I was just up there about a month ago, where places where I used to play was as a kid, and I just can't imagine it being anything else but what it is now, but that could all change.
Okay, so I've got the note on, on duplexes, if we, if they get converted into a single-family dwelling, and then one day want to undo that, um, we need to have some language, making sure they comply with any applicable regulations.
Yep, yep.
Okay, anything else, any of you have come across that we've missed in this process? Okay, so we now have our work cut out for us from-
Yeah, right.
From this-
We, we have guidance now.
Right, we have guidance, and, and so, um, I don't have a calendar yet with Anne, but we'll, we'll get to that for you, but we'll eventually gonna start funneling, you know, whole text to you as to what the proposed changes will actually look like, okay?
Great.
Um-
Wait, can I clarify who you, who you is in that session?
Sure.
In that theme, and you mean that, this mean you know it matters to work on it, we will get exactly what guidance is like in session?
Yes, that's me shaking my head, yes. As much as I would like to pawn this off on the Planning Commission to write, I don't think they're gonna do that. Sorry, I'm sorry if you can't see, but, so yes, I do mean you, me, and Noah, and, and Michael, if we pull him in, but, uh, and I mean Michael Stayport, not Michael Stroob over here.
Yes.
So, so, so yes, it's, it's our work product to, to do, and then eventually it will start to flow to the Planning Commission, um, as a, as a, hopefully close to a final product for their, their final review, and then I have briefly talked with the town manager, um, as I start looking at how we're gonna do this as a public hearing calendar moving out. I will tell you, he is supportive that we do these as joint public hearings between the Town Council and Planning Commission.
That makes sense, yeah, expedite.
To see you're aware of that, but I haven't gone beyond a, a working calendar, beyond just that one question getting answered for me.
Got it, okay, no problem.
But we will see it here before we go to a public hearing.
Yes.
Yeah.
Right, 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 right.
Right.
Okay, I think that ends your portion of the meeting, Anne.
Thank you both.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, glad to see you all.
Thank you.
You too.
Thank you.
Thank you, Noah, good to see you.
Good to see you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
I just have a couple more for you guys. Need to jump around, sorry. Under our standing staff report, um, I did wanna make you aware that we've approved a couple of infill lot subdivisions in, in the base, in the Bay Creek area, so I've included those, both showing what they look like on the aerials, and then the actual plaque themselves.
Oh, that's what that is, okay, all right, okay.
So, the top is showing the aerial viewpoint of what the land looks like today, down below is the plaque showing you what the lots are gonna be.
Okay.
Uh, so the first one up is, um, what they're calling Village, Bayside Village, Section Two, The Forest, and it's coming off of what's, what is Tax Map Lot B two, two oh five through B two oh eight. Um, they're gonna create a total of five lots, it's four for residential, and there'll be an open space lot left behind as well, that would go over eventually to the Homeowners' Association for that open space management. The next one was Bayside Village lots B 138 to B 146, it looks like a baseball diamond, I guess.
Yep.
And, to put that in some people's perspective, who may know the Bay Creek area, at one point, that would have been part of what would have been commercial areas down in Bay Creek, and that would have been a parking lot associated with those commercial areas, but since that has moved away from their pud vision, it's moving residential now, so they're creating nine lots out of that parcel.
Okay.
And then, this is a cleanup issue that happened, this is a re-subdivision plot of Village L, Phase 1C. Some people are referring this to as Murfield Village as well over there, just so you're aware, it's up on the, what I would call the bluff, so you come into Bayside Village, you make a right, and that gets you into Murfield Village from there. We had originally laid it out, and due to some negotiations with a potential purchaser, they wanted to reconfigure two of the lots to make it more palatable to the person who wanted to buy it. So we agreed to that, and that's what this is all about. And then the last one was within town, we had a vacation of lot lines, so over here on Fig Street for the Kellogg Building, they purchased the lot behind them, which they need for part of that proposed commercial project, and so we vacated the lot line in between that lot and the Kellogg Building, and it's all now one giant lot, and that commercial project can move forward.
And they'll have some parking in there? I know HVAC and the like may be in there, but have you seen anything? Because this is, this is a classic on parking issues.
Well, it's a yes and a no.
Go ahead.
And I'm going to give you the no first, because when this project, the Kellogg Building, was owned by somebody else, and this was back in 2019 or 2020, they took that project, which was proposed to be a restaurant on the first floor and some residential units up above, they took that to the Board of Zoning Appeals and asked for a variance on all the parking requirements, and were granted that.
Okay.
And that variance stays with the property.
Right.
And the use is exactly the same by the new owners of the property, so they get to continue, they've inherited that variance, and so they do not have to supply any parking on this site for a restaurant, for example, or for living quarters. However, that's, here comes a yes. So, they have shown me a draft site plan right now that we're still working our way through, there would be four parking spaces on this parcel, on this adjacent parcel over here, primarily because they're proposing what would be, they're going to be coming for an additional cup request, to add some additional living units up above, instead of, because what had been approved was one cup by the Town Council, they're going to be looking to add three more, three residential units up there, so it'll be a total of four up above, and primarily, that would be housing for the staff, that would be working at that location, so they would provide parking there as well. But there would be no parking provided for the restaurant itself.
Okay.
Just want to make you aware of that.
See, I think that's interesting, because that's just the conversation we were having with Ann. It is market forces, they understand that with residential, you have to have a space, but for the restaurant, people can walk, park across the street, take their golf carts, et cetera, there's...
We got some things to work through, I don't think it, as much as I think there's a win-win here, it hasn't quite worked out as a win-win for all parties yet.
Yeah.
I'm still hopeful.
Yeah, you may get the business across the street putting up a sign saying, "Customers only," right?
Yeah, right.
Right.
This is where people are going to start protecting their business.
Yeah.
And, yeah, it sounds great to have.
Then maybe they, maybe they work a deal with Ray Fields, and they say, "We'll give you some money to use your parking lot after 5:00 p.m. tonight." Ray Fields isn't open very late.
Yeah, that's correct.
I understand that, and I could probably shed some light on some of those conversations, but...
Balls in their court.
I had, Katie, I had a question with regards to other developments. I saw in the weekly report, two new apartment buildings on Old Cape Charles Road, is that our quad units?
Yes, that is by General Builders LLC, which, again, he's already constructed one of those units.
So he's now going after another two?
That's correct, there could be a total of four that have been previously approved by this town.
Right, 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 okay.
Yes.
Five lots, um, five acre lots.
One acre lots.
One acre lots.
There are one acre lots, there are four of them, one has got, has been constructed, was approved, it's occupied, he's now looking to get two more brought online, and then there's still one more to go. They still are going to be serviced right now, and he has planned for and been submitted all the paperwork and such, that they still would have water and septic serving those properties. He does understand the condition, that he will have to pay for the cost to hook into the town water and sewer when the line reaches that property. Board of Zoning Appeals, we want to make you aware, next Tuesday, April 11th, we do have a meeting at 10:00 a.m., we are going to be hearing an appeal of a decision that I've issued for, as a zoning administrator, regarding an alley being in existence behind Washington Avenue properties from Pine Street to Strawberry Street. And then, we've also received an application for the May meeting schedule, excuse me, for a parking variance application at 413 Jefferson Avenue. And, this is a new item, I felt you should know, we've been active in the Harbor area, so, most of it's been from the town being active, but the Harbor Area Review Board has now come into a meeting twice already, and will be coming into a meeting next week as well, but what they've done on the two meetings so far, they've approved the downtown visitor center and public bathrooms off of Strawberry Plaza, which is a town project. Town Council's now also approved that. They also approved the train car renovation and associated site work with that train car that's off of Strawberry Plaza, Town Council's also now approved that. And they've also signed off on the new municipal building, which is proposed off of Old Cape Charles Road, and Town Council's also signed off on that harbor certificate as well. And most recently, we just had the Rosenwald School property come through, and we heard their whole, their proposal. That got approved by the Harbor Board, and that is going to the Town Council at their April 20th meeting. And in fact, we then got another application in, and I'm working on that packet tonight, and that will be going out tomorrow. And that Harbor Board, Harbor Area Review Board will be meeting next Monday at 5:30 p.m. here in this building to take up that application, and it is from 6 Mason Avenue, which used to be known as the former Tobby property, or whatever you might call it down there on the harbor. It's just a small little piece of it, it's about 600 or less square feet, maybe 690 square feet, sorry, right on the north, I'm going to get this wrong, north?
Yeah.
East corner?
West.
Where, northwest corner?
Where the sun sets?
No, farthest away from the beach.
Then it's east.
It's the northeast, I was right. There's a tent there now.
Yes.
It's that area, and so the current property owner has a potential tenant for that little tiny space, and it's for golf cart sales and rentals.
Well, a third provider?
Yes.
Oh, my goodness, okay.
So that is coming forward at Monday's meeting to the Harbor Area Review Board, and that's supposed to also go to the Town Council for the April 20th meeting.
Okay.
And that's it of my staff report to you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Announcements, we've got, the next regular session is on Tuesday, May 2nd. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you all.
Thank you, Dan.
Mm-hmm.